Good evening, everyone. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. Sergeant at arms, has the front lobby been attended to?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. We request that all electronic devices be turned off or put into silent mode. Also, please refrain from using flash photography, except during the special presentations portion of the meeting. I am pleased to welcome you to the November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four school board meeting. The time is now six P. M., and this meeting is called to order. Pursuant to Florida statute one thousand one three seven one, the superintendent acts as chairman until the organization of the board has been completed. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. As is the custom of the board, Ms. Debbie Jordan will lead us in the invocation, and after the invocation, Mr. Armour Persons will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I would like to invite up to the lectern Reverend Howard Sapp, who is from District Four. Thank you Reverend Sapp for being here. He is the Associate Minister at Mount Olive A. M. E. Church, located at twenty-one sixty Veronica Shoemaker Boulevard in Fort Myers. Please welcome Reverend Sapp. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Let us pray. Dear Lord in heaven, we thank you for this day and another opportunity to make a difference in the lives of the people we serve. We ask that you guide our hearts, our minds, and grant us the wisdom to serve in a manner that will be pleasing in your sight. We pray that you bless our school board and its members as they make defining decisions that affect our kids, teachers, school staff, workers, administrators, and our community at large. Help us to work together in unity to achieve the success that you desire for our school system. This we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
Introducing the color guard that is presenting the national colors for our pledge of allegiance tonight is Sergeant First Class Michael Walker, Army Instructor from Dunbar High School. Sergeant First Class Walker served twenty-four years in the Army in numerous assignments and retired as a Sergeant First Class in the Louisiana National Guard Recruiting Battalion. This is Sergeant First Class Walker's third year as a J. R. O. T. C. instructor in the district.
Thank you. Presenting the national colors tonight is a Dunbar High School J. R. T. C. color guard consisting of the following members: Cadet Private First Class Jordan Merrill, Cadet Corporal Lisi Sanchez Acosta, Cadet Major Yuritzie Ruiz, and Cadet Corporal Santa Estep. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Board members, in a moment, I will open and close the nominations for chairman and vice chairman. Each will be followed by a vote. Attorney DeBree Bruno will explain the process in a moment. Then I will make a recommendation for the establishment of dates and times for the board's schedule of regular school board meetings. Attorney DeBree Bruno, would you please explain the nomination and voting process?
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. During the nomination and voting process, the board will follow the law's mandating open governance. In addition, school board policy provides that the board follow Robert's rules of order. Thus, the nomination and voting process is as follows. The superintendent will call for nominations for the position of chairman of the board. Please raise your hand and wait until you are recognized by the superintendent. Verbal nominations without first being acknowledged will not be recognized. Once all of the nominations have been received, she will close the nominations and the board's secretary will take a roll call vote. The vote will be taken in the order that the nominations were received. Each member will signify their vote by stating aye or nay, yes or no is also appropriate. We will continue this process until a nominee receives a majority vote of the board, four members voting in the affirmative. Nominations do not require a second. Once the chairman has been elected, we will move forward with the same process for the vice chair position.
Thank you, Attorney DeBree Bruno. Please raise your hand and wait until I call upon you before providing your nomination. I will now accept nominations for chairman of the board for the coming year. Mrs. Langford Fleming.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Board Member Fisher for chair.
Okay, Ms. Langford Fleming has nominated Mr. Fisher for chairman of the board. Yes, sir.
I'd like to second the motion.
Thank you. The motion has been seconded by Mr. Ribble. Ms. Jordan?
I would like to nominate myself. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan has nominated herself as chairman of the board. Any other nominations? Going once, going twice. Okay. Nominations are now closed. Mrs. Thomas, would you please take a roll call vote? We'll start with Mr. Fisher.
Nominee Fisher nominated by Langford Fleming. Mr. Fisher, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Giovinelli, how would you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Ribble, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan, how do you vote?
Nay.
Mr. Persons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Langford Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Chaviano, how do you vote?
Aye.
Madam Superintendent, by a vote of six one, Mr. Fisher has been nominated as chairman of the board.
Thank you, Ms. DeBree Bruno, and congratulations, Mr. Fisher. I will now accept nominations for vice chairman of the board for the coming year. Mr. Fisher?
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Langford Fleming for vice chair.
So Mrs. Langford Fleming has been nominated as vice chairman for the coming year. Yes, sir.
I'd like to second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ribble. Any other nominations? Ms. Jordan?
Yes, I'd like to nominate myself. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan has nominated herself to be vice chairman for the upcoming year. Any other nominations? Seeing none, nominations are now closed. Mrs. Thomas, would you please take a roll call vote?
Mr. Fisher, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Giovinelli, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Ribble, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan, how do you vote?
Nay.
Mr. Persons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Langford Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Chaviano, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, Board Secretary. Madam Chairman, by a vote of six one, Ms. Langford Fleming has been nominated as vice chair.
Thank you, Ms. DeBree Bruno. Well, congratulations to Mr. Fisher, who is now our chairman, and to Ms. Langford Fleming, who is now our vice chairman. Congratulations to you both. Board Secretary, would you please attach the tally sheet of the nominations to the minutes? Thank you. And Mr. Fisher, you're outgoing chairman, but now you're incoming chairman. So I'm going to pass the gavel to you, of course, so congratulations. And are there any comments you'd like to make, you know, just to wrap up the year or anything you'd like to share?
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, and I want to thank this board and the prior board as well for your faith in me. I appreciate that. I really want to thank, we've gotten a lot done in these past two years. We're really in a very good spot. I'm looking forward to the future with this. I also, special thanks to Mr. Persons for coming in and really setting the standard as chair, and I appreciate that as well, and thank you for Ms. Langford Fleming's service as well for that. I'm excited, as I said, for the future of this board, and, you know, I'm looking forward to putting the pedal to the metal, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you very much, sir. And so now I turn the meeting over to you, the new chairman of the board. Continuing for a second year, Mr. Samuel Fisher.
Okay. The next item in the organization of the board is to establish dates and times for the schedule of regular school board meetings for the ensuing year. Dr. Carlin, please read your recommendation.
Yes, sir. Approval of the calendar establishing meeting dates and times for regular school board meetings for the period of January two thousand and twenty-five through December two thousand and twenty-five as presented.
Board members, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. Moved by Ms. Langford Fleming, seconded by Mrs. Chaviano. Any discussion? Board member discussion, questions, comments? Ms. Jordan?
Well, I would like to make a motion regarding the scheduled meetings, and I think everyone should have received those dates ahead of time. And the amendment would be that the school board would include February nineteenth, April twenty-third, June seventeenth, August nineteenth, October twenty-first. And this is to accommodate the additional business of the board. Our counties, our cities, they all have meetings two times a week, and this would make sure that we could, and I don't need to be telling you all this because I'm making the motion.
Okay. Do we have a second to that motion? Mr. Persons?
I'll second the motion for the purpose of discussion.
By, the amendment moved by Ms. Jordan and seconded by Mr. Persons. For discussion, Ms. Jordan?
Okay, thank you, and thank you for that. And the reason that I am asking for the additional meetings, we have always had two meetings, and of course, if we did not need a meetings, we don't need a meeting. So these are for our action board meetings. If we look at the counties and the cities around us, they have multiple meetings a month. This would just give us an additional, it's like every other month, that we would have two meetings a month, which I understand that you all do not like meetings, but I believe that we need to have meetings where we can have conversations. This is action meetings. This would allow us that if there is a new hire, that we're not going to have to wait two months for a new hire to come in to play because of the fact that they have to bring them before us for that, and the same with job description or anything that would have to happen other than the fact that we could have a, an additional board meeting by the way of the superintendent putting one out there, or the board, or the board chair asking for an additional meeting, or the majority of the board putting that out there for a meeting, which I believe that, I don't know how that would work, so that's why I am putting this motion forward to add these additional meetings so that we can do the work of the board.
Mr. Persons?
Bob, I'm Ms. Juvenelli. Good points. I mean, I can see the job descriptions not being as much of a problem. We usually get those more in advance, or should be getting more in advance. I would hold the superintendent and the H. R. Department responsible for that. I would like, through the chair, to ask the superintendent about hires. Can we hire someone? Is that too long a period in between for hires?
So, thank you, Mr. Persons, for the question. In my opinion, we can make this work. When we did some research, and when I say we, the staff, looked at some of the highest performing districts in the state of Florida, and you know I made it very clear today, I intend to be, we intend to be one of the highest performing districts in the state of Florida. Many of them have a once-a-month meeting. They make it work. If we are organized and we are thoughtful in our approach, and we are strategic in our approach, we can make this happen.
Anything else, Mr. Persons, before I move on to Ms. Giovinelli?
Yes, just a quick follow-up there. Even though these are our action meetings, they're usually preceded by a joint workshop briefing-type meeting where the public, we really go into depth, and the public is allowed to speak at those meetings and comment as well as the action meeting that night. Just wanted to let it go on record. Thank you.
Mrs. Giovinelli?
Through the chair, to the board attorney, what is the notice period if we needed to have a special meeting for, like, for an emergency hire or something like that for some reason, or an emergency meeting that we feel that it's something that we need to address? What is the notice period and how, that procedure?
You need to have at least forty-eight hours, but the one thing you have to consider is how you're going to advertise. So sometimes we have some issues because it falls within the weekend. So you have to count the additional days for the, for the advertisement, even though now I believe we are advertising on the website, so that's probably not as difficult. But when you're having a special meeting, you are supposed to notify the public in all kinds of forms as much as you can because you're not giving them the seven days' notice.
But how many, how much notice do we have to give that?
If it's a special meeting, forty-eight hours.
Just forty-eight hours.
But you have to make sure you advertise, so you really should go on the radio. You got to put things up on the doors to the boardroom so people have as much notice as possible because you're not giving them the seven days required notice by statute.
But we still could do a seven-day notice if we foresee that we need to do a workshop or have some kind of a meeting.
You can always add meetings to your calendar if you need to by giving the seven days' notice. That's, that's, yes, the board can do that.
So, okay, so we could, at one month, we could talk about having, if we think we need one, and we will have an advanced notice and timing to do a seven-day notice and do a meeting, a workshop, or whatever's needed, that way. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just to be clear, I mean, you really want to be careful with special meetings because they really should be reserved for emergencies. So as much notice as possible is what you're requiring, and that's at least seven days.
That's, that was the, really, seven days is what I was trying to get to. Thank you.
Mrs. Langford Fleming?
Yes, thank you, and thank you for bringing this up for conversation, Ms. Jordan. I know that this is incredibly different, and you're the most tenured on this board, so this is very different from you, for you. So my, my question is, I gain a lot of insight and knowledge on our briefings, which, which, when I say briefing, I think of my briefing with the superintendent as the one-on-one through, so through the chair, can I ask the superintendent, do we, or do you plan to, or what is your expectation on having meetings with the board continuing from here on? It's usually one-on-ones once a month, every other week. What is your idea through that?
I plan on continuing exactly what we have done with Dr. Savage just prior to my arrival here on the scene. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead, then. I'm going to give some comments.
If you look at, we have, if you look at the dates that we're looking at right now, there is one occasion here where it's almost two months before we meet. So it's not, yes, you're meeting once a month, but it's almost a two-month span time for us to even be together to have any conversation. And I don't understand why that seems to be a problem with the board not wanting to, when this is the only opportunity that we have to speak to one another or to get information that we would not go ahead and put five more board meetings on there, and if indeed we do not need that, then we would not have to have that. But for us to just, if you look at June, there's one on here that is almost two months before we meet, the July one. So June third and then July twenty-ninth, so that's almost two months of us not meeting. But we have to have the July twenty-ninth because that's the budget. So I, I just am concerned that we're not, you know, to me, this job is, we're here to do our job and to make sure that we are overseeing our fiduciary duties that everybody speaks about, all the, everything that's taking place, we need to have that. Not saying we have to have a workshop and an action meeting, but at least have a meeting to, to make sure that we are all understanding the same. I just can't stress it enough.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. I appreciate your comments. As we now look at the prior board, we met the most of any school board within the state, perhaps in the nation. I personally do not, as I said, I personally don't want to waste any of our staff time. I want them focused on student achievement in this district because that's the number-one goal of this board in this district right now. I don't, as it says, it doesn't preclude us from adding workshops or, or other meetings. So, and so it's incumbent upon us as elected officials to make sure to go out to, to the community and talk to, you know, our citizens out there to let them know what's going on. So, again, it doesn't preclude us from anything else. I think it's, you know, efficiency as well. Doesn't mean our voice is narrowed into any other means. Most other school districts throughout this state do it that way, so. Anybody else before I move on to vote? Okay, so at this point, we're going to be taking a vote on the amendment. This will be a roll call vote. Could you restate the amendment, Ms. Jordan, please?
It was, my motion was to amend the, my motion is to add additional meetings to the calendar, February nineteenth, April twenty-third, June seventeenth, August nineteenth, and October twenty-first to accommodate additional board business.
And that had been moved by Mr. Persons. We are going to take a roll call vote on the amendment. Ms. Giovinelli?
No.
Mr. Ribble?
No.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Persons?
Nay.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
Nay.
Mrs. Chaviano?
Nay.
I'm a, I'm a nay too. So motion fails one to six. We are now back to our regular original motion. Does anyone have any further comment on that motion? Okay. Ms. Jordan?
I just want to make it known, I will not vote for this one either. Just to make sure with the fact that you just stated that we will add workshops or whatever's needed, I want to make sure that the public is aware of that these are the ones that you all want it, and that, that's why we're doing this.
Okay, thank you. Board members, please, we're going to be voting electronically on this. Please select your option. Please give us a brief moment as we address technology issues. Thank you. Motion carries six one. Moving on to the next item is approval of the agenda. This evening's agenda includes public comment consent action items, which include two items under board office, two items under academic services, five items under business services, two items under human resources, nine items under operations, two items under public hearings, and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Ms. Langford Fleming?
I move to approve tonight's agenda.
Okay, do we have a second? Mr. Ribble? Moved by Ms. Langford Fleming and seconded by Mr. Ribble. Please record your vote. Motion carries seven zero. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Attorney DeBree Bruno, please address the issue of public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. Please complete a public comment card and put it in the basket provided. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff. The rules concerning public comment are posted in the back and will be made from the podium in the front center aisle. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Concerns will be addressed by the superintendent or her staff as necessary, and the chair may comment as deemed appropriate at the conclusion of public comment. The superintendent or the board attorney may also comment if deemed appropriate. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on district issues such as duties, responsibilities, decisions, and the general operation of the school district. The school board is viewpoint-neutral during public The school board is viewpoint-neutral during public comment, and we ask that decorum be kept and respect be shown, which is what is expected when a government agency conducts official business. Therefore, abusive language defined as swearing, use of profanity, or name-calling is prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, booing, or a display of temper during public comment is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order by the board chair or the board attorney. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 0169.1 and may be removed from the chambers by the sergeant-at-arms. Per Board Policy 0169.1, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are twenty, two minutes if there are thirty, and one minute if there are thirty-one speakers or more for a maximum time of one hour, sixty speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screens in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. I will call you five speakers at a time. Please follow staff's direction when lining up. Mr. Chairman, there are nine individuals that wish to address the board this evening. The time per speaker is three minutes.
Thank you, Attorney DeBrie Bruno. Please make sure you've completed a public comment card if you intend to provide public comment. The card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff or follow. The cards are located with staff in the hallway. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board but did not fill out a public comment card? Please raise your hand. Okay. Seeing none, Attorney DeBrie Bruno, please proceed with public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will the following individuals please line up? Marge Cox, William Bronson, Robert Daniels, Dr. Paula Porter, Kevin Daly.
Good evening. I'm Marge Cox. I live in Bonita Springs. I'm a retired educator. I want to say first of all, thank you to those board members who've served so much from the heart and had the Lee County students at the very center of what they believed would be good for them. And I'm sure that board members now will continue to do that same action. Our students are what is most important in our school system. Having said that, as a part of the Purple Group, we feel like our teachers are very much important to the whole educational process, and we're here to support them. We very much would like to see Lee County schools become what we say we want to be, which is a world-class educational system, so that every, every child has the chance to be the best they can be. Thank you for the opportunity to share.
Good evening. I'm William Bronson. I live in Lehigh Acres. I'm planning, I thank you for the opportunity tonight to address you. I'm going to drop, I'm going to leave with you four documents. The first is a hundred-and-ten-page curriculum for teaching religion in the public schools. It's in three parts. The first part is a survey of world religions. The second part is a survey of the Old Testament and a survey of the New Testament. It conforms with the requirements set by the courts as having a secular purpose, and it creates no undue entanglement between church and state, and it neither promotes nor denigrates any religious worldview. The second document is a rationale that's unrelated directly to the curriculum. When someone asks me, I should write a reason why I'm doing what I'm doing. The third document are the guidelines themselves that were formulated in 1999 by the First Amendment Center in Nashville, Tennessee, and were distributed to every school in the country twice. So this is nothing new. And I should say that the textbook that has been widely used in forty-five states and over a hundred high schoo, a thousand high schools for over nineteen years has never been challenged legally. The, the final document is an endorsement by the ACLU of the guidelines, which I just mentioned. There's a growing consensus that removing the study of religion in public schools has had the unintended consequences of minimizing its importance to a well-rounded education and its basis for a sense of meaning and discipline among students. Litigation over how this is done has caused public school administrators to take a cautious approach and generally abandon attempts to address this difficult issue. I would advise the board to take a proactive approach to this and adopt a method of handling this issue within the parameters set by the courts. Our curriculum does that. And also, I would invite the legal team, since I put this into public domain, to make any edits or changes that seem to be too close to the line of advocacy of any particular religious worldview. Our website has additional information at www-enlightenededucationcoop.org, and our organization is available for consulting.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up, sir.
My name is Robert Daniels. First, I'd like to congratulate and welcome all the new board members and superintendent. I couldn't be there earlier today to do it because, like most of your employees, I was working. Unfortunately, these meetings are our only time to come forth and speak to you in this manner. And while you have the envy of every teacher that's been stuck in a meeting they thought could have been an email, it's very unfortunate for all of us that our number of opportunities where we can bring things to you publicly like this have not been cut in half. If only we structured our meeting so that this comment couldn't have been made fifteen minutes ago to be part of the arguments considered before the decisions were made. But to move on to my regular topic, as I will, the new board members will know, I usually come down and talk about teacher compensation and then voice a few problems. We have the same problems we've had perpetually in the district for the last ten years. The student population has gone up by over twenty thousand in the last ten years. Your number of teachers has been flatlined during that time. The only reason we don't have a massive amount, even more so than what we already have, of open positions, is we've moved from eight classes to seven classes, compromising the quality of education of our students because we can't bring enough teachers in. The teachers' complaints, much like the complaints of all the other employees, are a lack of student discipline and pay. We can solve the pay problem throwing money at that problem, simplest equation there is out there. One of the perpetual answers I've had on why we can't fix this simple problem, talking to ex-board members and current board members and those who were on campaign, is that you're told there is no money. We say we need more money, and then at the end of the year, when all the chips are counted, it turns out there was a lot of money left over. So I think perhaps we can start that process a little earlier this year to make sure all the chips are on the table when we're deciding how big that pot of money is. Furthermore, on the non-pay aspect, when it comes from teachers, bus drivers, and support staff, that they feel they're being disrespected, not just by the students, but by those in charge of discipline, when referrals are not taken seriously, when they feel they've wasted the time and the paper or the electronic memory to submit those complaints, it really goes far to further degrade morale, encourage teachers to look elsewhere. Because if you're going to do a job that's become miserable, you may as well maximize what you're bringing home with it. There's nothing to encourage them to make that sacrifice to stay here instead of going to Collier or Charlotte if they continue to feel disrespected. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Michael Andosia, Holly Smith, Tara Jenner, Lou Navarro.
Hi, Dr. Paula Porter, Lehigh Acres. First of all, I'd like to extend thanks to the two outgoing members of the Lee County School Board, Chris Patrica and Kathleen Morgan, for their incredible years of service to our schools and students. Both were instrumental in pushing through the vital half-penny tax and have worked tirelessly on all issues that came before the board. Ms. Patrica and Ms. Morgan added strong voices of reason and critical thinking in a graceful and respectful way. The two newcomers to the board definitely have big shoes to fill when it comes to commitment and compassion necessary for this vital position in our community. I also want to introduce me myself as a member of the Purple Group. We welcome the two new board members and new superintendent. We are a nonpartisan group of over two hundred members. Many of our members are current and retired educators, including administrators, teachers, staff members, and university professors. We wholeheartedly support the values of our school system becoming a world-class education system. In our participation here at the school board meetings, at committee meetings, and making comments, we are ardent supporters of public education, providing relevant and credible information and evidence-based resources in our efforts to support student learning and quality teaching. The members of the Purple Group are here ready, willing, and able to support the Lee County School Board, our teachers, administration, and students in the upcoming years. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Daly. I am the president of the Teachers Association of Lee County. We are the union that bargains for the fifty-eight-hundred, I guess the best way to describe them is certified personnel, teachers, nurses, social workers, that group. I'd like to welcome the two new board members and Dr. Carlin back in another role. I just wanted to take a time to introduce myself and to, to let you guys know that we are ready to be partners in one of Dr. Carlin's number-one priorities, which is staff salary. It's about time we get serious about staff salary. I would like to take us to a time in the two-and-a-half years I have remaining, from lowest-paid in southwest Florida to the envy of southwest Florida. So we look forward to working with all of you and Dr. Carlin in making that, not necessarily a dream, but that necessity a reality. Thanks.
Hello, and congratulations to the brand-new board. My name is Michael Andosia. I'm a former teacher. I am a, still a proud union member, and I am a member of the Purple Group. Some of you may already be familiar with me. You've seen me in the news. I was the teacher who last year resigned because, resigned in protest when over six hundred of my books were removed from my classroom. I learned subsequently that this whole situation, this whole mess, was the result of a single parent sending a text message to the deputy superintendent. Now, this is a situation that hangs like a sword of Damocles, not on me anymore, I'm out, but over every teacher in this school district, who feels that the first thing that they need to do is police the things that they say. This hangs like a sword of Damocles over every single teacher in this district, who must first, before they can do their job, before they can introduce challenging ideas and pedagogical best practices and encourage their students to do critical thinking, they must first think, is something that I say in the next forty-six minutes or something that could be construed that I say in the next forty-six minutes going to overturn my life? That's what, that's something that they're all afraid of, especially the teachers who care. So one of the things that they're doing is they are watering down their curriculum. I guarantee, I have talked to plenty of teachers who tell me, I don't do classroom debates anymore because that's too dangerous. I don't introduce literature that might be challenging to my students or that might offer challenging ideas to my students because I have a mortgage to pay, so I'm going to take care of mine first. And you cannot have a world-class school system when you can't challenge your students. Introducing diverse ideas in the classroom is the opposite of indoctrination. Limiting to, limiting teachers to only teach what the state considers, or at least a movement within the state considers, to be appropriate, that is indoctrination, when you limit students to one point of view. That is pretty much the definition of indoctrination. So I would really love to, to ask and beseech this board, a new board, with a new year ahead of us and some new priorities, to prioritize academic freedom. Teacher pay is extremely important. Respect for teachers is extremely important. But academic freedom is also a part of quality workplace for our teachers and for our educators. So let's rededicate ourselves to the great academic freedom that my teachers had when they taught me back when I was a student at Riverdale High School a few years ago. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Holly Smith. I'm councilwoman for the City of Sanibel, and the City of Sanibel has a liaison position for the board, and I am your liaison. So I first want to say to Superintendent Carlin, welcome. I've watched you work the last seventeen months, but much seems like decades probably, for the work that you've done, and we look forward to the success of Lee County and our children and our families and our teachers. Chair Fisher, congratulations. Vice Chair Langford-Fleming, congratulations to you. I know many of you on this board, most, all of you now, much better, and I just want to let you know, we are here to collaborate with you in any way possible. I know right now that our cities, our families and our kids are, are able to learn elsewhere, not under choice, but because of what needs to be done right now as we get that school safe to make sure the children come back. We're really appreciative for the Heights Elementary that is housing our school, housing the families and housing the teachers, and we know they're in a safe, good environment. I do look forward to when we can welcome our children back home to Sanibel Island at their school, and we will be there with open arms and just know if there's anything on behalf of the City of Sanibel that we can do to help in any way. We are here for a resource to you, and we'll collaborate with the school in many ways. Thank you, and I think that we're, we're looking at a very good future for our children and the families. So thank you very much for all of your commitment.
Good evening, Superintendent, new Superintendent, and old and new school board. Lou Navarre, retired teacher and Talc member. I want to be one of the first to congratulate you. Unfortunately, I spent all my campaign money backing candidates to get rid of the candidates in the City of Cape Coral, so, but I still congratulate you. First, I want to thank you again for making Veterans Day, starting next year, as promised, a holiday. It was kind of sad when the kids had to go to school this year, but Mr. Persons, he's going to make sure this goes through and put it on my bucket list, all right? When I was a member of Talc, it was a holiday, but I'm glad we've gotten rid of the hypocrisy. You remember Val Kilmer and Doc Holliday, he'd always say hypocrisy. I'm happy. Why have these students, young men and women, come down here, the cadre, with their commanding officer, and then we don't respect the veterans? But I'm, that's one of my things that I'm going to look forward to. I have a plan. I'm calling it the 2025 Plan, but we'll unfurl this as we go along, but I'm going to start giving you a preview of the coming attractions in the seventy thousand dollar starting salary. Well, we've talked about that forever, but I want to make sure we're going to focus on increasing the yearly increments when you move to your lengths, which was told to me by a teacher six weeks ago. Six hundred dollars a, a year is paltry. Come on, folks, that's why we don't have teachers anymore. And besides, like that gentleman said, we've harnessed them. They can't even practice free speech. said, we've harnessed them, they can't even practice free speech. One other thing I'd like to say is, and no offense to our new superintendent, but I would like to see the board put a ballot where we have an elected superintendent again in four years. Spencer Roach did this. In all my 70 years, I don't remember when the state legislature mandated to just Lee County to have a vote. So much for home rule, folks. Everything's gone away. It really is. Lastly, pray for Dr. Bell. He's a friend of mine. His family asks for prayer. He's been in the hospital a month. Some of you know him, and I'd also like-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up, sir. Your time is up, sir. Your time is up. Your time is up, sir. You are done.
The grammar guru in me compels me to remind all of you to please set the example and stop putting a pause between "one nation" and "under God." It creates a verbal comma and a subordinate clause that places the nation under the flag instead of "under God," where it properly should reside. The other thing is, I'd like to echo a little bit of what Mr. Daniels said about moving to a single meeting almost every month, and that is, it does limit public comment as well by the regular schmoes that are out there, not just the teachers. So I would encourage you to consider, if you have those workshops and those briefings, that you schedule those in the evening so that individuals may attend, and since there will be the same quantity of information that is presented and the public will be limited in their public comment speaking on the topics, that you consider extending public comment to 90 minutes rather than only an hour, and that you consider prorating the amount of time. So if someone stops speaking at the two-minute mark, that it can add additional people on to the schedule, much like they do in Cape Coral at their city council, and allowing people to speak for longer periods of time or until they have their say at the Board of County Commissioners. Additionally, this random cutoff at the 20 person and then immediately cutting it to two minutes seems a little bit draconian. When you can do the math, it's an easy calculator thing. You have a nice little clock on the wall, so you can figure out, okay, maximum three minutes maybe, or maybe four, since we're limited to one meeting a month, and then have it set up so that we can actually engage in conversation with you at these meetings, because our communication with you is not just for the benefit of the board and the public, but also the audience who are participating online, which is where I've been recently, more than here, as well as those that are in the chambers. So I highly encourage you to consider revisiting the board policy on public speaking at your action meetings. Again, one, to extend the time; two, to allow prorating amounts so that individuals, if it's like 31 people, you divide that by the number of minutes that you have for public comment, so that we can make sure that it's not cut off, like I said, some arbitrary cutoff time period. Anyway, I wish you all the very best, and thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes public comment for this evening.
Thank you, Attorney DeBree Bruno. Superintendent Carlin or Attorney DeBree Bruno, is there anything you wish to address regarding public comment?
No, sir.
I have nothing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We truly appreciate it. Now, we're gonna be moving on to approval of consent action items. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We're expected to review all the material, and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshop with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for further discussion? So, Mrs. Juvenelli.
I have none. Thank you.
Mr. Ribble.
I have none.
Ms. Jordan.
I have none.
Mr. Persons.
I have none.
Mrs. Langford Fleming.
I have none.
Mrs. Chaviano.
I have none.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda consent action items?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that, second the motion.
Moved by Mrs. Chaviano, second by Mr. Ribble. Please record your vote.
Chair Fisher, roll call vote, please.
Okay.
Mrs. Juvenelli.
Yes.
Mr. Ribble.
Yes.
Ms. Jordan.
Aye.
Mr. Persons.
Aye.
Mrs. Langford Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Chaviano.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Motion carries seven zero. Oh, Dr. Carlin, please introduce any administrators and attendants with a new assignment that was approved under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure to introduce our newest administrators here in the school district of Lee County. Joining us this evening is Ronald Boils, who's going to be our new Director of Transportation Services. Ron, are you here? Fantastic. Thank you. Congratulations. Next up is our coordinator in benefits and wellness, our leave-of-absence coordinator, Stephanie Sharp Persekowitz. Our next board action was taken on Clint Garlic, who is our principal at Amontisere Elementary. Holly Matthews moves to principal and assignment in the superintendent's office. And James Buchanan will be heading up the Director of Transportation Services, also in one of our zones. Thank you. I would like to congratulate our administrators, our newest appointed administrators, and just thank you for your hearts of service and for the work that you will do. We're very proud of you and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carlin. Moving on to item S, public hearings. Dr. Carlin, please present your recommendations for this evening's public hearing items.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. So item S1 is approval to adopt new and revised board policies in compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be November 20, 2024. We also have one other item, approval to adopt the plan for student enrollment 2025-26 in compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be November 20, 2024.
Thank you, Superintendent Carlin. We'll now recess the school board action meeting and open the public hearing. The time is 6:55 PM. As indicated, the public hearings this evening are to consider Dr. Carlin's recommendations, as previously stated. At this time, the public will be invited to speak on these two items. The time allowed for public comment will be three minutes. First is item number one. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board regarding the approval to adopt new and revised board policies in compliance with changes in related rules and regulations and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability? The effective date of this adoption shall be November 20, 2024, and I will go by chapter, section. First will be chapter 000, and that'll be bylaws. Is there anyone wishing to address said item in public comment? Seeing none, chapter 2,000, program. Anyone wishing to address this item for public comment? Seeing none, chapter 4,000, support staff. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this item? Seeing none, chapter 5,000, students. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address this item? Seeing none, chapter 7,000, property. Is there anyone wishing to address this topic? Seeing none. Gonna move on to item S2. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board regarding the approval to adopt the plan for student enrollment for 2025-26 in compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability? The effective date of this adoption shall be November 20, 2024, sorry. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address public comment on said item? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing and reconvene the regular school board action meeting. The time is 6:57 PM. Dr. Carlin, please restate your recommendations for these items.
Thank you, Chair Fisher. Item S1, approval to adopt new and revised board policies in compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be November 20, 2024.
Thank you, Dr. Carlin. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approve to adopt new and revised board policies in compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be November 20, 2024. Board members, do we have a motion to approve? Mr. Persons.
Make a motion, and we approve the superintendent's recommendation to adopt new and revised board policies.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Persons, second by Mrs. Langford Fleming. Any discussion, board members? Okay. At this point, please record your vote, then. Moving on to item S2, Dr. Carlin, if you could please restate that.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Item S2, approval to adopt the plan for student enrollment 2025-26 in compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be November 20, 2024.
Thank you, Dr. Carlin. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approve to adopt the plan for student enrollment for 2025-26 in compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be November 20, 2024. Board members, is there a motion to approve? Ms. Langford Fleming.
I move, we approve the adoption of the plan of student enrollment 25-26.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Langford Fleming, seconded by Mrs. Chaviano. Any board member questions, comments, discussion? Okay. Seeing none, please record your vote. Superintendent Carlin or Attorney DeBree Bruno, is there anything you wish to address about the previously, previous public hearing items?
No, thank you, Chair Fisher.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item T, good of the order, and board member comments, so I will start with you, Mrs. Juvenelli.
Okay. I will be quick, because I am going to just read my speech from earlier today, for those that weren't here. It is truly an honor to stand before, hear you today, as I am sworn in for another term on the school board. I want to take a moment to express my heartfelt gratitude to the residents of Lee County for placing your trust in me once again. Your support means the world, and I promise to continue working tirelessly for the education and well-being of our children. First and foremost, I must thank my husband Craig and my two daughters, Raquel and Mia. Your unwavering support and love has been my foundation throughout this journey. You inspire me every day to be a better leader and advocate for our students and our families. Thank you for standing by me through thick and thin. I would also like to acknowledge my parents, who instilled in me the values of hard work, integrity, determination, and serving others with an open heart. Mom and dad, you taught me that by doing what was right and giving our best efforts, we paved the way for success, not just for ourselves, but also for others. Your guidance has shaped me who I am today. I carry those lessons with me into every decision I make on this board. I think it is important to give credit where credit is due. I would not be here today without the support and controversy of two outgoing board members. Their initial support helped me to win in 2016. For this, I am not just blessed, but truly grateful. I felt it was important to give them the credit for my 2016 and 2020 victories. They opened my eyes to the need for transparency and accountability. I have strived for those changes on the board. Not only did they help me get elected initially, they also were the major reasons we now have an elected superintendent, and I support it and welcome. This was a much-needed change for accountability to the people whom we serve. We really are lucky to have Dr. Carlin as our newly-elected superintendent. Congratulations, Dr. Carlin. I could not be more excited about tonight and about the new board that we have and our new superintendent. Together, we are going to be a board that listens and respects whom we serve. We are all accountable to the people that elected us. Congratulations to the newly-elected board members and Dr. Carlin, and I am honored to be part of this new board. It is truly such a momentous day. I also would be remiss if I did not take a moment to recognize Dr. Savage and his dedicated staff for their remarkable service over the last eight months. During a period of turmoil and uncertainty, Dr. Savage stepped up to the plate, demonstrating exemplary leadership and unwavering commitment to our community. His ability to guide us through such challenges has not only restored stability, but also inspired confidence in our shared goals. Thank you, Dr. Savage, for your dedication and for making a positive difference in our educational environment. As I reflect on my journey, I recognize that I am here by grace. It is God who has brought me to this moment, who continues to guide me in this role. I am reminded daily of the responsibility I have to hold and to serve our community and lift up our schools. With faith and perseverance, I know we can achieve important things together. I am excited about the future of Lee County schools and the potential we must foster in an environment where every student can thrive, where the staff is successful and prosperous. I look forward to collaborating with each of you, parents, teachers, staff, and the greater community, to ensure that we provide the best possible education for our children. Thank you once again for your trust and support. Let us embark on this journey together, focused on shared mission of excellence in education. I am honored to continue serving and advocating for our students' futures. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Mrs. Juvenelli. Mr. Ribble.
Yeah, I just have a few- Yeah. As you know, the last three days of last week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, we had an onboarding orientation, which I thought was very, very well-planned and very well-executed. I want to thank Dr. Savage and the staff for organizing an excellent three-day session. It was rewarding to have the opportunity to speak to the regional superintendents for academic achievements. Mr. Chairman, I finally got their title right. I think you'd be proud of me. But anyway, we had a great focus group meeting with that group, and I applaud their efforts in their four zones, and I know they'll do a great job. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ribble. Ms. Jordan.
Yes, first, I would like to congratulate my fellow board members and Dr. Carlin. I look forward to working with you all to achieve the very best for every child, and as a reminder, I would want us to remember that we are a nonpartisan school board that was voted by the people, and that, and I loved what Ms. Juvenelli said, that we need to make sure that we are listening and that we respect one another. So I'm looking forward to that taking place as we move forward. I want to also thank Gulf Middle School for inviting the parents, the families, their children, grandchildren, to the veterans' breakfast. They did a beautiful job representing every armed forces and had the parents stand up, and the children were able to be there to celebrate with their grandparents or parents. It was really beautiful. Also, I want to give a shout-out to all the children who performed at Ida Baker. We had the All County Elementary Choir, and they just did an amazing job representing all of us. So I really want to give a shout-out to the teachers and the parents who brought them there to the practice, and just to really make a shine. It was really nice. And then last is, we celebrated the ribbon-cutting of our new clinic at Franklin Park Elementary School at the Community Partnership School. This is a great opportunity. It's going to benefit our community. It's going to benefit the students, the staff, and I just really want to let them know how much we appreciate them being a part of the district. And last but not least, I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Mr. Persons.
Well, like everybody else, I'm looking forward to this year. It'll be a lot of fun with the new board members here. I think it should be a very congenial board. It was last year, and I see that continuing. Madam Superintendent, looking for- Madam Superintendent, looking forward to working with you, letting you, you'll be able to do your own thing without worrying about one of us trying to get you fired. So, but I think that's very important. I think that's to be able to make the changes need to be made. That said, I had a great time last Friday at Bay Shore School, their new name we passed tonight, at their hoedown. The Bay Shore Cloggers put on a terrific show for everything from, might have been kindergartners but at least first grade and above. They did a great job performing. And then there were all sorts of games where the kids did ring tosses, even a cake walk that my wife went round and round and round, multiple tickets before she finally won a cake. But all the games were run by the sixth grade Honor Society. You know, they just became a, starting their journey to K eight and this was the first year they had a sixth grade. And then there were tons of bounce houses, rock climbing, all sorts of things for the kids to do. And as if that wasn't enough, you had the Culver Scoopy mascot there running around giving out free ice cream. But the highlight of the night was their auction that raised money for the school. You say, well, what does a school auction? Well, they had a lot of the normal things you give away, you know, gift baskets and even a kayak and some other things. But the parents really ponied up for two things. One were private parking spots with their name on it for the year. They go from this hoedown all the way till the next year's hoedown. And in the parking lot, their name's up there and they have that, they can pull in there in the morning, drop their child off, whatever. It's their parking space. And they went for anywhere from a thousand to twenty-eight hundred dollars, I think one of them went for. But yours truly, our family, got the prize, the best prize. That was being first in line in the parent pickup. We can come one minute before the school bell and that spot is saved and back into that spot. So, we could be last there and first out. And that surprisingly didn't go for as much money as a private parking spot, but I think after the other people think about it, it will go for more next year. So, this will be our, probably our one and only year that we can afford that. But it was really a great event. It was attended by close to two thousand parents and kids. So, I mean, it was, almost every kid in the school was there, plus their parents and grandparents, et cetera. So, great evening. That's all I have.
You're a true asset to the school board, Mr. Persons. Thank you. Mrs. Lakeford Fleming.
Yeah, you have no idea how much money people will pay for front in line, free parking, and to sit front row in a high school graduation. So, just a couple of things. First of all, yes, congratulations to our new board members. Looking forward to serving our community alongside you and with our current members. Thank you for continuing to trust me in the position of vice chair. Thank you for your support. Congratulations, Dr. Carlin. Seat earned and well-deserved. We're happy to have you. And congratulations to all the newly-appointed staff this evening. I was able to sit in on the calendar committee. That committee, that calendar, I think, was emailed. Yes, I was vocal about Veterans Day. I need Lou to understand that I spoke up in the meeting about that. I went to a couple Veterans Day events and it was interesting, all of the events were not on Veterans Day. They were on like the Friday before or the Thursday. So, I'm looking forward to a day where our veterans that actually work for us will be able to take that day off and be honored themselves. I know they always get invited to go to a Rotary or a parade or speak and they, and they're teaching our kids, so they're not able to do that. So, I'm looking forward to that. Also, oh, and congratulations to that calendar committee because they got the committee meeting done in one meeting. That's very rare.
Awesome.
Yep. I think the funnest thing I've done since my last vacation, which was about a year ago, was umpire, the Santa Claus Society's kickball tournament at Fort Myers High School. I had a whistle, a clipboard, and a clicker I keep in my glove box. So, sixteen teams played in this tournament and it was completely student-run. Santa Claus Society is one of our many student-led organizations that has, that is run by students only, and we have hallways filled with students like this all throughout our district. This just happens to be the one school I actually came to. And it makes my heart so happy to see students with a serving heart at such a young age. So, thrilled to be able to be a part of that. And general comment to the public, I understand that we had a lot of conversation tonight about our calendar coming up for meetings, and I just want to put it out there that I am only an email and a phone call away. So, should you not be able to feel like you have an opportunity to speak, but every thirty days, please know that that opportunity to connect with me personally is open to you. And I want to say thank you and happy Thanksgiving to the entire staff. I hope you find time to relax, enjoy your family, and reflect on all of your blessings. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Langford Fleming. Mrs. Chaviano.
I'm going to piggyback on Bill's statement. Last week, we went through a really awesome onboarding and the staff did a great job. We were able to connect with various chiefs and departments and it was nice to put faces to names and see what's going on. So, definitely looking forward to the weeks and months ahead to learn more and just continue to connect with our amazing staff because we are, I think, very fortunate. We have some really great people here. So, thank you for that and happy Thanksgiving as hopefully everyone can actually relax next week and not cook too much. But no, I'm just honored to serve and thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Chaviano. I'm going to piggyback off some of the other comments. Two events, one of them I went to with Mrs. Langford Fleming, the Heights Sixtieth Anniversary. That was amazing. Really enjoyed that. The Heights Elementary Choir as well as the Sanibel Choir was over there. They did a great job in honoring our veterans as well. I was able to go over to Cape Coral High School. They had a, I don't know if you saw on the news, but a really, really special event. There was a couple out of Port Charlotte that their house was destroyed in the two most recent hurricanes and the IB students took it upon themselves, stepped up, and raised ten thousand dollars for that family. So, it was, if you haven't checked it out, please check it out. So, props to Cape Coral High School, Principal Jackson, and Ms. Toadvine for setting that up. That was, it was amazing. So, welcome back, Mrs. Juvenelli. Welcome aboard, Mr. Ribble. Welcome aboard, Mrs. Chaviano. And welcome aboard, Superintendent Carlin.
Yes, sir.
I am so excited for this. As I said, you know, as Mr. Persons said, we're coming off a very, very productive board and I am super excited to where we can go from this point. So, I'm going to tell all of you, let's go.
Giddy up.
Attorney DeBree Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It just really has now sunk in that I am the only employee of the board left. I don't know what that...
That's the auditor.
Oh, that's right. Until we get the auditor. But congratulations again to Mrs. Juvenelli, Mr. Ribble, and Ms. Chaviano. Looking forward to working with you. Congratulations to Mr. Chairman. Madam Vice Chair, I'm definitely looking forward to working with you again for another year. And even though, you know, it's a little different, but you're still Dr. Carlin and our superintendent of schools, so I look forward to working with you as well and congratulations. So, thank you. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving and thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Attorney DeBree Bruno. Superintendent Carlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I do have one item of business just to share with the board, and that is, as the superintendent this evening, I am going to be removing the tagline "Personal, Passionate, and Progressive" from our district's branding. I've heard from, over the last thirteen months, an abundance of our constituents who have shared with me that this is a political term and it really does not have a place in our, involved in our school district, and it really does not represent most of our community. So, I wanted to let you know that I will be making that adjustment and that will start this week. We will talk with staff about that. So, just, I wanted you to be aware of that, of that change. Now, on to some appreciations. I do want to congratulate Mrs. Juvenelli on a wonderful campaign and a successful reelection. Congratulations. Great job. And also to Mr. Ribble and Mrs. Chaviano, we had the pleasure of all serving as the class of twenty-four on the campaign trail. It was a pleasure getting to become reacquainted and then also get to meet some new friends. So, we know that you're going to join this board and just do a great job. And to all of my elected colleagues on the board who have been here, thank you very much for your continuation of doing the good work on behalf of children, and I look forward to joining you as well as Mr. DeBree Bruno in continuing the work that we've done as a district and just taking us to the next level. I also want to share appreciation, as Ms. Juvenelli did and others did, for our outgoing superintendent, Dr. Savage. You know, when somebody comes to you and says, will you fill in the gap? Will you step into the interim role? He did that once and then he did it twice. And I have to tell you, and you know what that job entails. It is a tremendous sacrifice on family time and what have you. Ken stepped right in. He didn't hesitate and he has done a phenomenal job. And I just thank our staff and all of our board members for your support that helped him do his job and do it well. So, we're very blessed to have him on our executive team and he will now be our deputy superintendent. So, I'm proud to announce that tonight. Also, I wanted to let you know that Dr. Jennifer Cupid-McCoy, who has been in the deputy superintendent role, has been moved to our chief strategy officer. And that was a vacant position when Dr. Savage moved into the superintendency and Dr. Cupid-McCoy will do an exceptional job in that role. I also want to, again, just thank everybody that was involved in today's ceremonies. We had a beautiful oath of office ceremony. They spoiled us down there in the atrium with food and music and the children were involved. So, that always does my heart good and makes me smile when I see our children that are out there, our students are out there making good things happen in our community and charity always starts at home, right? So, we take care of our own, but they did a phenomenal job, the students that performed and the students that were cooking and being involved in the JROTC. So, just thank you to everybody that was involved in that planning. I really do appreciate that because events like that don't happen on mistake. They happen with a lot of hard work. I also want to take a moment just to address the general public. Thank you to the Lee County voters for placing your faith in me. We recognize that this is the very first time we have had an elected superintendent in fifty years, not fifteen, fifty. So, that is the first time in most of our lifetimes that we've had the ability to elect a superintendent. And as I've stated on the campaign trail, I am very serious about our work. We are going to ensure safe schools. We are going to increase student achievement. We are going to increase teacher retention and recruitment. We are absolutely going to ensure fiscal responsibility and we are going to make sure that we engage our parents and hear their voices because they are partners, valuable partners in education. So, I look forward to working with all of you as our governance team. I'm very excited about the work. We have so much to do and four years is going to go like that. So, we're going to get started tomorrow. We have a principals' meeting. Directors and up will be meeting with us and we will start talking about not only the priorities but action plans to make those things happen. So, I'm excited about the work. Look forward to that. After we have our meeting, to our staff, I hope that as we progress into our Thanksgiving holiday, just to echo the words of our esteemed colleagues here, please make sure you take the time to enjoy that time with your family over Thanksgiving. I know the rate at which you run, all of our staff in schools, all of our staff down here at the district office, please take the time to have a blessed Thanksgiving and to our families and our students the same to you as well. Thank you, sir. Those are all my comments.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Next scheduled meetings of the board will be Tuesday, December tenth. There'll be a school board workshop at two thirty P.M., followed by a school board action meeting at six o'clock. At this point, having no other business to come before this body and seeing no objection, this meeting is hereby adjourned. The time is seven twenty. Have a good night.